To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C, adjustments to the agenda.
I have none.
I believe Mr. Wood would like an adjustment made so the eighth grade can go out of state. Would you mind just telling us what that is again, Mr. Wood?
Do you want me to come up here?
Sure.
Brother and sister stuff. So we are, for the eighth grade trip, we're looking to go right now to Salem, New Hampshire, which would be Canterbury Park. It would be a one-day trip. We were hoping to raise the funds for SEER busing to leave the school early and be back around 6:30 or so.
Okay.
And we'll have supper after that.
All right, great. We will add that. Thank you. Where should we add that, Mrs. Kane?
Uh, how about, um, right after number two. Just slide it in there as 2A.
2A, oh, okay. Oh, there it is. Okay, it was already added.
I thought it.
Yep.
It was on there, okay.
Yep, it was, yep, it wasn't added earlier, so, okay, great. Okay, item D, approval of minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes of the March 10th, 2022 board meeting as presented.
I second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Item E, communications correspondence.
Uh, yes, I have several letters of resignation. And as always, we are appreciative of the time that books were here and we wish them all the best in their new ventures, so. Uh, I have a resignation from Rebecca Faulkner, LCSW, at Ellsworth High School. And that's due to military relocation, so, again, we wish her family all the best. Thank you for your services. Dakota Jewett is resigning from the position of head wrestling coach. Thank you very much for your time. Jen Beal is resigning from her position as grade-two teacher, effective at the end of this year. Best wishes to Jen. Samantha Shepherd is resigning from her ed tech position at EEMS, effective May 6. Thank you, Samantha. And Josh McCormick, eighth-grade teacher, resigned from his position, effective immediately at EMS.
Thank you. Item F, administrator board reports. Building administrators?
Lost my internet connection. Hold on for a second. There it is. All right, I'm April Clifford. I'm the principal at Ellsworth Elementary Middle School for K-4. I had a couple of cool things in my board report this month that I want to share publicly. We had Lita Pasaraskis art distribu-, or displayed at the Youth Art Month at the Portland Museum of Art. I put a link to her picture. One of the really cool things that she's doing is, it's kind of, the timing worked out. The pictures that she chose were blue and yellow for her art project, and so it's really, it aligns with the country of Ukraine. And she, Mom printed out a couple of those things and made some cards out of them, so she's doing a little bit of a fundraising to donate, to support that country at this time. And we're actually hoping to have some of those cards available at the third-grade concert coming up, so our third-grade parents can support our third-grade students. We're pretty excited about that. Working out the details still with Mom, so. I put a link for that. Emmy Lang, who is a rock star, she is one of, she's a great kid. Anytime we have a new kid in school or a kid that has a hard time coming into school, she's the first kid I go to get them, to meet them at the door and bring them down the office. She just has that personality. She loves school. She's very engaging. And she was, her artwork was chosen for a calendar. The focus of the artwork was reduce, reuse, and recycle, and her artwork was chosen for that honorable mention in that calendar. And that link is in my board report, and both of these will be posted on our website. I haven't had a chance to do it yet, but I'll be doing that soon. Pretty excited about those two students. They're awesome students at our school, and I'm just glad to be able to start to recognize students for some of their success. And both of those are in the arts. We have, mine is full of art this week, but we, or this month, we've had our concerts. So I don't know if you've made it to a concert yet. I do want to wish Mrs. Kellogg, right now, and our music makers group, they're having their concert currently at school today, and I'm excited to see that second performance. They're going to do it for students tomorrow morning, but I'm really excited about that concert. So we've had our kindergarten concert and our grade-one concert, and we had to set up every chair in the building. It was absolutely fabulous. Grandparents, great-grandparents, aunts, uncles, cousins, friends. We had packed houses for both kindergarten and first grade, and I put links to each of their performances. We kind of just record them in-house, and students can watch them. If we have inside recess, sometimes they'll replay the concert or during a snack break so that kids could have something active on there, and they enjoy watching themselves on stage. So those are both posted. I also included the dates of the concerts that are coming up. Grade two is April 27, and grade three is May 26. Grade four has changed. I need to make an adjustment to that, but there'll be communication coming out from Mrs. Brown. Also, we're looking for ed techs immediately. Very happy the college kids are almost back, May 9. We've reached out to everyone on that list who's willing to work daily, so we've got some additional staff coming in to EMS, and we're excited about that. I also needed a bookkeeper position, which we'll start to re-advertise and look for soon. I want to thank Deanna Leathers for staying with us and throughout the end of the year and helping us with our budget. And then we have one resignation, which Ms. Kane read today, and one retirement, so we have one grade-one teacher. Or they're both two-grade-two teachers, but we're going to shift one to grade-one based on some numbers. That's my report. Any questions?
Yeah, so great.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wood?
Hello, I'm Travis Wood, the principal for grades 5, 8, and you have my report. I do want to highlight a couple of items in it. So we do a thing called the Gold Wing Award at our school. It's the end of every trimester. And I neglected to put the first trimester students' names in, so I've added them here. And I do want to take a minute to congratulate them. So Andrew Kearns and Dalton Burkhardt, fifth grade, were in our first trimester. For sixth grade, it was David Hudson and Belle Venezuela. Seventh grade was Josie Mosley and Maddie Carrier. In eighth grade was Bailey Clayton and Tyler Hollenbeck. And it was really great. We had to do it virtually, which was something that we've, we had to do last year as well. But I'm thankful to say that the second trimester, we held in person, and it was packed. Parents were coming in to see their kids. I just, I was really excited to see that happen. So our second trimester award for fifth grade was Cam Worf and Molly Jordan. For sixth grade, it was Rose St. Germain and Ryland Jester. Seventh grade was Braylon Byrd and Boris Felix. Eighth grade was Jovan Pessek and Ethan Joy. And again, it was just amazing to see all those kids and just, we actually had two things back-to-back because we also celebrated our students that did well in skills at school after the announcement. And that was, we had gold medals for three categories. One of them actually is qualified to go to the Nationals, and we're right now in the process of fundraising for that, so that our eighth grader can go. We have some upcoming events. We have the Gulf of Maine Research Institute. We have our fifth graders going down there April 28. And then on April 1, we had a guest speaker for Acadia National Park for our sixth graders. Seventh grade, this was amazing. I'm a left-brain math guy, so to see these kids write persuasive essays at seventh grade was amazing. And some of the things we had, we had a couple of our students, obviously, are lobstermen, and they were talking about the whales and what it's doing to lobstering and how they're trying to do both, save the whales and continue to lobster. And then we had a young lady that did something on capital punishment, which was amazing. All the facts that she found and did, it was, it was quite amazing. And then we did, we had, well, we had 80 of them total, so I just highlighted a few. There was a minimum wage one. And then the one that I leaned towards that I thought was pretty neat was some, we had somebody do one on the best baseball player of all time and use stats and, and from everybody, from all different generations, and said, that's just why this person is. I want to know, note that we are having a volunteer training. Right now, it's scheduled for April 27, from 5:30 to 6:30, and we plan on doing that online as well. And we're going to see if we can't record it so that people can actually go there if it's like an emergent situation where, oh, I forgot to do that, I'll just go here. I know that there may be some coaching positions open. I don't know which ones they are, but again, if you're interested in coaching at EMS, Mr. Downs is the person to contact. And I know that you all know me and know me well enough to know how much I love sports, so to stand outside and see both ball fields being utilized and hearing the kids on the track and just, it's just amazing that we're already there for spring sports, so. But that's really all the highlights I have on my report is there, are there any questions?
Yes, you have to tell us now, who is the best ball player of all times?
I didn't agree with it personally.
But there were stats involved, so.
There were, there were.
So you got to get, give us the skinny.
All right, I can actually pull that up if you want me to.
No pressure.
No pressure at all. It'll take me just two seconds. I'm pretty sure. Oh, here we go, in here. All right. Best ball player of all times, according to Mr. Hughes, is Vladimir Guerrero Jr. And his stats back it up. So it's pretty decent. It was a pretty decent write. And like I said, I get to read a lot of them, but I just, I couldn't believe the range of things that they chose to talk about. It was pretty good.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
All right, yep.
I think that's all we have for building reports. And Rachel is not here tonight, so we.
Rachel, no, correct, thank you.
So that brings us to you, Mrs. Kane.
Okay, so first I would say thank you for, I've excused several administrators tonight. It's that time of year where there aren't enough nights in the calendar to fit everything in, and we have occasional conflicts, and some people are sick or have sick family members and families first, so I.
And we have open house at the high school tonight.
That's right. So we have open house going on. I know some of us will, you know, if we're done here, we'll jump on up over there. And so Amy Bowles is there as well for HCTC, but she has a wonderful group of teachers that have come to take care of their pieces. And so I'll just share a few things with you. At the high school, EHS One Axe Regional Champs. Madeline Henry wrote the play Slipping, and the cast won a regional championship, so that's great. Congratulations to the whole cast, and Ms. Ireland as well. And also, the jazz band took silver, so lots of great things going on. Two pages, I mean, double-sided page of all kinds of great things happening there. And HCTC, there are 300 students registered for the technical center next year. 300 students, so.
Can we fit them?
That's great, really good, and they had open house two weeks ago and had 150 in attendance, so.
Wow, that's amazing.
So this, it's great to have so many good things going on. End of the year, Wednesday, June 14, unless something else happens, which it's not, there will be no more weather events because we've set our last date, so that's it. Crappy. Wednesday, June 14 will be the last student day, and that will be a half-day, of course. And then Thursday, the 15th, will be the final staff day. Thank you very much to the Rotary Club. Tuesday night, they recognized 30 seniors. They do an annual senior honors banquet, and it was, it was very nice. Lot of supportive comments and, and just a really nice time for those students, and they streamed that live so that parents could, could be there. And pool testing, the Department of Ed has notified districts that pool testing will end the second week of May after we turn from break. And we're thinking with the, what we're hearing, you know, how quickly it spreads and that the, the testing even, you know, per the officials is not particularly effective, tomorrow will be our last day of, of pool testing, so we will not continue that after break, so. As many districts have discontinued that at this point. So however, we have applied for and will receive the at-home test kits, and we'll have us apply those that we can send home to parents, so they'll have that available if they like. I know many people have probably already done that through the other program that's available, free to families, to get those in the mail. And I think that is all I have at this time.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Item G, committee reports. I know we've all been pretty busy with the superintendent search, but I don't know that any committees have met this past month. I don't think so either.
No, other than personnel, but we've been busy with the superintendent search.
Yeah.
Nothing to report yet.
Well, get ready, because after break it will be budget, 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 so. We'll, we'll catch up on lots, lots of subcommittee meetings.
All right, item H, old business. We are moving right along here. Item I, public participation. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to new business. Item J, item one is staff and student presentation for Skills USA.
All right, good evening. My name is Megan Stubbs. I am one of the Skills USA advisors for Hancock County Technical Center. I'm also the Early Childhood Education Instructor. With me tonight, I also have Tara Mason, our Hospitality and Tourism Instructor, and Michelle Cody, who is our Health Occupations Instructor. I would like to take this opportunity to honor our Skills USA main state medalist. First, I would like to honor those students not able to be in attendance due to prior commitments, and then have our students that are present introduce themselves. So first, not able to be here. Addison Nelson, biomedical sciences, Ellsworth High School, Jr. She applied and was put in as a state officer. Emily Hutchins, Early Childhood Education, senior from Sumner Memorial High School, a bronze. Taylor Staples, Health Occupations Portfolio, senior, Darryl Stonington High School, received a silver. Griffin Werner, senior, George Stevens Academy, welding sculpture, bronze. Leo Clapp, Jr., George Stevens Academy, Andrew James, Jr., Mount Desert Island High School, Paige Sawyer, senior, Ellsworth High School. They are three of the health knowledgeable team of four, and they received a bronze. Madeline Henry, senior, at Ellsworth High School, and Brian Olickney, senior, Ellsworth High School, they did the Digital Cinema production as a team of two, and they received a bronze. Also, our Ellsworth Middle School competitors are going to be recognized at the May board meeting. So now I will ask our students to come forward and introduce themselves.
My name is Sean Casey. I attend George Stevens Academy. I'm a junior. I take welding at Hancock County Technical Center. I'm a state officer.
I'm Taylor Mason. I'm a junior. I attend Ellsworth High School, and I attend the Hospitality, Travel, and Tourism Program. I got gold medal for prepared speech, and I am also a state officer.
I'm Alexis Higgins. I'm a senior at Ellsworth High School. I attend HCTC for the Hospitality, Travel, and Tourism Program, and I got gold medal for job interview.
Hi, my name's Lauren Judson. I'm a junior at Ellsworth High School. I'm in the Health Occupations Program, and I competed in medical math, in which I received gold.
Hi, I'm Trinity Pratt. I'm a senior at MDI High School. I am in Health Occupations, and I was the fourth competitor in the Knowledge Bowl and got bronze.
Wow, great job to all of you.
So thank you for letting us be here tonight to acknowledge all of their hard work and achievements. Are there any questions or comments, or would you like me to move forward to our proposal for Nationals? I will also do that.
I'd just like to say, very well done. You should be proud of yourself. We're very proud of you.
I have a question. I see that we have an Ellsworth American reporter here. Maybe, would it be possible to get all the students together?
Absolutely.
Did you get a picture already, or? Maybe if they could all stand.
It would be great if you could do it right now.
Yeah.
The advisors come up. I see the advisors are being shy, but I think.
Your community is very proud of you.
Can I say something to the advisors before they're? Thank you to the advisors. I, I know firsthand, it's, it's a huge amount of time that you put in to helping students, and you put in lots and lots of hours, and they appreciate it, we appreciate it, and parents, thanks for all your support. For students, you know, it's quite a bit of time.
We're happy to do it.
It's well worth it, for sure, so.
You ready?
Ready?
So that's, okay. So Amy Bowles did include national information in her board report that I hope you will have a chance to look through, as it's very thorough. We're looking at sending three high school gold medalists, one being a state officer, two additional state officers, and one Ellsworth Middle School gold medalist. This is the very first year a middle school student has qualified to attend the national conference for the Ellsworth Middle School. So we're also looking at sending five staff members with these students, so three HCTC staff members and two middle school staff members. Please note that there will be two additional adults attending, though. One more middle school staff member who will be paying for herself, and then our middle school student has to have a parent accompany them and stay in their hotel room with them, so his parent would also need to attend. State officers will travel with state staff from June 17 through June 25 as they attend an extra leadership training on the 18th and 19th. The rest of our students and staff will travel from June 19 through June 25. The conference itself will start on Monday, June 20, with a state dinner and some contest briefings. Tuesday, there will be more contest briefings. Some contests do start on that Tuesday. This day will also have opening ceremonies later that night. Wednesday and Thursday, there are more competitions or callback for competitors who advance to the second round. Friday, there is a community service project, and then closing ceremonies where students will learn how they have done. After closing ceremonies, we will have a state debrief and dinner where students learn how they did in their competition if they didn't medal. So that is very helpful for them because, of course, there are only three medals, and that can feel defeating, but a lot of times, there's over 40 competitors in their competition at Nationals, so it's nice to know where you've fallen. As in past years for advisors and coaches, we look to use local funds to cover as much of the trip as we can. Then we only use local funds for student registration. We will fundraise for the remainder so students hopefully don't have to pay any cost out of pocket. We have our Boggy Brook 5K on the books as a fundraiser and are looking to also hold a spaghetti dinner. The estimated cost per person is around $2,400, depending on the cost of airfare. And the closer we get, the higher it goes. So you will find a breakdown of cost in Amy's board report, though. Thank you for your consideration, and are there any questions?
Can you remind folks when the 5K is?
May 15.
May 15, thank you.
That's Miss Mason's class helping to support that. We have not set a date yet for spaghetti dinner.
Will that happen at HCTC?
Yes.
Can people sign up for the 5K, the morning of the 5K?
Yes.
The one staff member, I think you mentioned in the beginning, who would be traveling at their own cost from the middle level, are they a chaperone, or they're traveling as a, as, I know you said it was a parent, but I wasn't sure about why they would be traveling at their own expense if they're a chaperone.
If I'm super honest, I don't know the answer to that.
That's okay.
Thank you, Travis.
Sorry, I didn't, but, so it's, Mr. B's wife is going with him because they're going to drive down, and she wants to be part of the process as well, so that's where the, thank you.
Sorry, sorry, not to put anybody on the spot, I just, I didn't, I wanted to know, what, what did that staff member do that we are not going to help with? Because that's just wrong, so, thank you. It's a spouse.
Do you have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the overnight trip for Skills USA as presented.
I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Can we be excused to go to the eighth grade open house?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you all for coming.
Good job.
Bye. Thank you. Great job.
Thank you, teachers, for coming to you. We appreciate it very much.
And thank you, parents, for supporting these kids.
Absolutely. Those baking competitions start at 4:00 in the morning.
I haven't seen it this empty in here in a long time. Wow.
It's right before vacation, so.
Yep.
And there's, yeah.
A lot going on.
There's lots of good things going on, and even with the rain, it's, it's a good piece of happiness at all.
Thank you, April. All right, Mr. Wood, you're up again. My apologies, I didn't realize that this had actually gotten added to the agenda tonight, so.
It's on the official agenda.
All right, so we're doubly certain.
Is there anything you would like to add that you had not already?
Um, just that we don't have the date. We, we had created a tentative date based on the 17th and worked our way backwards from that, and then in our meeting this week, I found out it was no longer the 17th. So that actually backs us up into a lot of the high school activities. So Mr. Clifford and myself are working right now, trying to figure out how best to do it, and we're going to have a meeting during break with some of the eighth-grade parents and discuss what that's going to look like for us to be able, so I know it'll be in June. That's all I can tell you, and it'll be a one-day trip.
A lot of the parks don't open until the 15th, then.
Right, well, we did find out, though, Canterbury does open for one day on the 10th before the 15th. So there's that, but then also we've got high school stuff going on that day, so we're, we're still working that out to determine how, how best to proceed so that we all get to where we need to go, as well as make sure that nobody misses anything they want to miss at the high school.
I think it was a good decision not to try and keep the entire staff and student body for an extra day longer than everybody else in June, though. Probably.
Oh, no, I, I was happy with that decision. I just wanted to get to the other decisions, but, yes. Any more questions?
Want a motion?
All right, I do want a motion.
I move that we approve the out-of-state trip for the eighth-grade class on a date to be determined as presented.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Great, thank you.
Lots of parents involved with that, too, right? It's great, parents involvement, student involvement. Excellent.
And we actually have chaperones, and we have, I mean, it's almost done. We just don't know when.
Yep, just need a date. It's going to all come together.
That's right.
Great, thank you. All right, item three, consideration of a teacher nomination.
Yes, I'm very pleased to present to you for consideration Molly Corson. Molly Corson has an associate's degree in culinary arts. She has been out in the field for six years since she completed that degree, working. She's actually been on the West Coast most of that time, but Maine is home to her. She is a graduate of Mount Desert Island High School and also of HCTC. So we are very excited to have her come. My understanding from Mrs. Bowles is that she really blew them away in her interview with her excitement and ideas about things she could bring to the program and loves that age group. She's done some coaching of, of students that age, you know, with athletics, and so we're very excited to have her, so. I nominate Molly Corson for first-year culinary arts teacher, beginning in the fall of 2022.
I move.
I move, I move to confirm the superintendent's nomination of Molly Corson as culinary instructor at Hancock County Technical Center with a first-year probationary contract for the 2022-2023 school year.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Smoke a Molly Corson?
Yes, yay.
Okay, item four, discussion and consideration of draft 2022-23 Ellsworth School Department calendar.
Okay, so this is the, um, actually, it's in your, um, it is in the folder, but it didn't get in there until later. So if you need a hard copy or you don't see it, it's right here. Uh, but essentially, no changes from the first draft that you looked at. Uh, and it, it looks very traditional, uh, in terms of how your typical calendar runs. Uh, and this, uh, draft has three snow days built in and would have the last student half-day as Thursday, the 15th, and the last staff day would be Friday, uh, the 16th. Uh, and it does also have on here added the additional holiday, which would fall on Monday, the 19th, which would be Juneteenth. So it, it works well for us to be out, uh, before that. Uh, and hopefully we won't have a lot of snow days, just like this year, and all of those pieces will come together. Um, and that is all I have unless there's questions.
And this is, this is the same one we looked at last time.
Yes, yes, no, no changes, exactly the same.
And we've received input from the teachers.
Yes, and we'll, I need to put the, um, I'll have Teresa help and make the bottom, have those sort of detailed pieces on there, but.
Great.
We'll do that right at the end. Won't change any of the dates per se.
And just to kind of let people at home know, this means that we have Friday, December 23rd off and Friday, December, I'm sorry, Thursday, December 22nd, a half-day.
Correct.
So that, I think it works better than, uh, some of our previous calendar years, uh, for Christmas holidays, so.
It does, you know, and, and that's, it, it's important to staff, you know, it comes at the end of a typically exhausting, uh, time, but exciting time, you know, certainly. Uh, but it's helpful for families that are traveling as, as many do. Uh, and looking at how the calendar falls out and where holidays landed, it, it makes a lot of sense. And we'll be back that following Tuesday on the third because Monday is where that New Year's Day holiday will be observed since it lands on a weekend, so.
And the other thing people are curious about often is, um, the start of the school year.
Yes.
And so the first student day is August, uh, 31st, Wednesday. Wednesday, August 31st, so Wednesday and Thursday and Friday before Labor Day will have.
Yes.
School in session.
And that start, you know, which, which the school department has done for.
Yep.
Several years now is really helpful for, for students in particular, I'm sure for staff as well, but to have three days and then the next week is four days and then the next days, next week is five days.
Yep.
Uh, to sort of, you know, ease into those new transitions after being out for summer break.
Mm-hmm.
Of course, we have the, um, the Blue Hill, Blue Hill Fair holiday that's, you know, observed in there on, 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 on Saturday.
Which is sacred.
Exactly, sacred, yes.
All right, do I have a motion?
You want me to do it? I move to approve and adopt the 2022-2023 Ellsworth School Department calendar as presented.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Great, thank you. Okay, this brings us to item K, calendar and announcements. We have a school board workshop Tuesday, April 26th here in Council Chambers at 6:00 PM. And we have our next school board meeting Thursday, May 12th at 6:00 PM here in Council Chambers. And item L, adjournment.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second that.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Great.